All right, folks, let's get started. Big agenda. It goes through item T. I just asked. That's 20 items, so 20 items in 20 minutes.
No.
All consented here. All right. I call the meeting, April 27th, meeting of the Committee of the Whole to Order. My name's Craig Mladra. I'm one of the aldermen from the Fifth Ward, and I serve with my partner, Tom Simonian. Item number three, the Consent Agenda. There's only one item on the Consent Agenda, approval of the minutes from April 13th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any again? Any comment? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I got ahead of myself. Let the record show that all the aldermen, save for Alderman Cummings, are present. Moving on to items of business. Keep going.
May I?
Well, I didn't know if we were doing something at the top.
I don't know. I don't. It's up to, it's up to the council.
I'll defer to the chair.
Yeah, I'll defer to the chair. May I do my proclamation now, or?
Yeah, if you wish.
Only because, well, I thought maybe they would be here, but they are not, and I'm sure they're very busy. So, this is a proclamation honoring Jim and Mary Gearing. I don't know if everybody knows this, or know the Gearings, but they have been very helpful to the Geneva Beautification for many years. They started when we started actually doing this. And I would like to read this and just make a statement, if I may. Whereas the Geneva Beautification Committee was created more than 20 years ago with the purpose of maintaining planting beds, containers, flower boxes located in Geneva's central business district, and whereas Jim and Mary Gearing have been faithful volunteers, really, with the Geneva Beautification Committee since its inception, and whereas Jim and Mary serve on the main general, I mean, Geneva Beautification Committee that oversees all planning, organization, and fundraising for all the volunteer group, whereas Jim and Mary have faithfully served as area captains and adopted, planted, and tended one of the gardens in downtown Geneva, and whereas Jim and Mary served as organizers of the Pasta for Posies spaghetti supper fundraiser for many years, and whereas Jim and Mary created a firewood fundraiser fondly referred to as Grandpa's Play, and organized a group of friends to assist with the splitting, wrapping, and delivering of firewood to benefit the Geneva Beautification Committee. Therefore, I, Kevin Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, do hereby honor Jim and Mary Gearing on their two decades of dedicated volunteer service with the City of Geneva, and urge all residents to join in honoring their hard work for Geneva Beautification. They have really served our city very well, and they're moving, they sold their house and they're moving to Florida, so I wanted to recognize their service to the beautification program.
I move that we accept your petition.
We cannot do that.
No motion. It was a good and well-deserved recognition. I wish they were here to have heard it, but if they link the agendas, I thought better to get it over here at the top.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on to items of business. Item A, recommend approval of special event application for Swedish Days, June 23rd to 28th, including a request for use of public right-of-ways and city services. So moved.
Second.
Alderman Brown, Alderman Sino. Do we have questions?
Thank you, Chairman. With regards to the city services and in-kind services, do we track these by event?
We do.
We do? And, okay, so there's a way to get that information at a future date. Thank you.
Would you guys like to add anything?
Us?
Each year, Jean, you tell us what's new.
Yeah. Well, we will begin on June 23rd through the 28th. I think this is the 66th year, and I can't tell you how much we rely on and appreciate city services, this partnership that keeps this event going every year. We continue to get awards for best of. We hear from so many people that it's their favorite event, favorite festival in the area, so we're very proud of what we present. We're following the same schedule that is a tradition that has worked for all of these years, but we always do try to add something new, at least refine it, get rid of the stuff that doesn't work, keep the stuff that's a favorite, and of course, it definitely is a family time. A lot of events for kids, a lot of events for families. This is the family festival.
All right, thank you. Great. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Item B, recommend approval of special event application for Geneva Concord Elegance, August 23rd, 2015, including a request for use of public right-of-ways and city services.
So moved.
Second.
Marks and Simonian. Do we have any questions from the dais? No. Anything you guys would like to add? No.
Thank you.
How about you two?
May I just make a comment?
Alderman Flanagan.
Yeah, for years, the Bennetts have been, and the Otto Concorse have been very gracious to have their flower pots remain on Third Street after the event, and I'd like to have a special thank you, because over the years, it's been an added benefit to Third Street, so thank you very much, and hopefully you'll continue over the years. Thank you.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Item C, recommend approval of special event application for Multi-Sport Madness Kids Triathlon, May 24th, 2015, including use of public right-of-ways and city services. Have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marks?
Second.
Alderman Sino has the second. Do we have any questions? No questions? Anybody from Multi-Sport? No. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, recommend draft ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II, adding one Class B3 liquor license for Rascals Tavern and Grill at 207 South Third Street.
So moved.
Second.
I heard the second from Alderman Singer and Alderman Bruno. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions about item D?
Yes, Chairman. Who's, can we get a little background on who's Rascals Tavern?
Young ladies are what it is.
Oh.
Okay.
It's Rascals.
Which one's the tavern and which one's the grill?
She can be the tavern. It's gonna be a casual upscale sports bar. We're gonna have, we're adding 13 TVs. We're gonna have pizza, burgers, some pasta, some entrees. We're both Geneva graduates, so my kids go to Geneva, so we wanted to keep it in Geneva and it's family. Yeah, our dad's one of the owners, so.
He's had restaurants before.
Great.
Yeah.
You have some of the outside seating still?
Yes, that's staying.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's gonna stay.
Nothing better on a spring morning, spring weekend.
And so the viewing public knows you are located where?
At 207 South Third Street.
That's the old grotto.
The old grotto.
And your estimated or opening time or hope for?
Hope for the 18th.
Cross your fingers.
May.
May.
Cross your fingers, we're hoping.
We'll keep an eye out. Thank you. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
We'll be there. Alderman Gilbert, did you have a question?
I may want to introduce ourselves.
I'm Deana Prey and Jackie Sisto.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. All right, all in favor of item D?
Aye.
Any opposed? You never know. All right. Motion carries. Item E, recommend draft resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the Special Tax Allocation Fund for and/or from proceeds of an obligation issued if any in connection with a proposed TIF district commonly described as the Geneva Fox River Development Project area.
So moved.
Alderman Marks?
Second.
Alderman Flanagan? Thank you very much. Do we have questions on item E?
Thank you, Chairman. Did I read Mary somewhere in one of our emails about Springfield and TIF? And, I mean, is this gonna impact, could it possibly impact, or if we get this in before they do anything?
We see legislation often regarding TIFs.
Microphone, please.
Sorry. We do see legislation on a regular basis regarding TIFs. So far, it's, we haven't seen anything substantive. I think the one that you're referring to is relative to the different communities being within a school district, and the community that's originating and implementing the TIF would need permission from any other municipality in that school district's bound, within their boundaries. That hasn't passed yet, so at this point, we don't know. It's being lobbied against, as you can imagine, but at this point, it's not been successful, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Do we have any other questions? No. Any questions? All in favor of item E?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item F, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with S.B. Friedman Consulting Services related to an eligibility study for TIF number four and the execution of a memo of agreement requiring certain private property owners to pay for such services. I have a motion for item F.
So moved.
Alderman Brown?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Okay, questions regarding item F? No. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item G, recommend draft resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the Special Tax Allocation Fund and/or from proceeds of debt issued, if any, in connection with a proposed TIF financing district for the Southeast Master Plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Marks?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sino. Do we have questions about item G? Is this TIF for Ozzy? Okay, I think, no questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of iPearl water meter from Census during fiscal year 2015 and 16 for a total cost not to exceed $87,200.
So moved.
Second.
I've got, and Alderman Brown? Do we have questions? Alderman Singer?
Yes, thank you. This has been an ongoing process, I understand, for the last four years or so. When do you feel that the obligation will be terminated?
Well, there's always gonna be some maintenance that's gonna require to have meters changed out. This will be a never-ending project, but we are well within about a four or five-year horizon, depending on what the costs are. If they stay reasonable, we think we can probably convert the vast majority of the manual reeds into the system. There will always be some holdouts with residents where they just don't want to send their home with these types of meters, and it's gonna take some extra effort to get in there. About four or five years, I would answer your question.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did I have, did I see any other questions? No. All right. All in favor of item H?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Carries. Item I, resolution authorizing purchase of cartridge filters from American Melt Brown and Filtration during fiscal year 2015-16 at a price of $6.75 per unit.
So moved.
All right. Motion from Alderman Marx. Second from Alderman Kilberg. Thank you very much. Do we have questions on this item?
Richard, is this for multi-year purpose, or is this just one-year usage of those cartridges?
This is probably for about a 90 to 120-day lifespan of these filters, these cartridges. Yeah, they're an expendable item within the water treatment plant, and they're purchased throughout the year. What we're doing with this bid is that instead of having to go out to the market every three, every 90 days and go through this process again, we're locking in a unit price for the year.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? No. All in favor of item I? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item J, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of Itron 100-watt ERTs from Water Products during fiscal year 2015-16 in amount not to exceed $69,000.
So moved.
Alderman Marks? Alderman Brown? Thank you very much. Do we have any questions about this item?
Alderman Kilberg?
With an item like this, isn't there a possibility or an opportunity maybe to work with some other communities that are using like equipment and try to negotiate maybe even a better price? I mean, I would think this would be fairly standard, a standard purchase for a lot of communities.
Well, it'd be specific to this type of metering system that we use, and that's, to be honest with you, that's not something that we had thought of in the future. We could implement that in the future.
I mean, at least make an inquiry. I mean, I think if you would, you know, consider putting, you know, three or four communities together, and you just made, you made an annual purchase over here, you know, is that something that we could consider looking at as far as some of these other routine purchases, possibly?
We would have to find.
Maybe it's not feasible, I'm just saying, I know that there are other things that we can do through the state as far as trying to generate some purchasing power. I'm just wondering if there are like items that we could co-op with some other communities on, possibly, where we'd get on the same buying schedule, purchasing schedule, you know. I, you know, I'm just throwing that out as a possibility or something maybe to consider. I think the council, at least I would be open to that, if we could save some money.
It's a good idea, if you want us to look into this and pull it off of the agenda, but.
No, I'm not going to defeat it. I'm not gonna vote against it. I'm just saying it as something to potentially consider. I don't, maybe.
No, it's a good idea.
Absolutely, it's a great idea.
I can ask a more general version of the same question, which is, how does one go about getting things put on the state buying list, so that over the years, we've saved a lot of money by items that are on the state's purchasing? How many communities does it take to sort of have the state decide, oh, well, maybe we can get a statewide contract on this?
The state of Illinois is gonna do what's good for the state of Illinois. The rest of us get to piggyback off of their coattails. And the state of Illinois is not in a water utility or electrical utility business. There are other opportunities, such as the Northwest Municipal League, there are some other joint purchase agencies where we can purchase other items, but we've never looked into it on this type of a purchase for equipment.
Well, I have, to my mind, it would depend on how many different communities are using the same product, so I'm sure we're not, we're one of a few communities that use the filters for the water and et cetera, but there just, there should be some mechanism. You've mentioned a couple where maybe it would be paid to keep, keep watching, just to make sure that there aren't possibilities there of multiple units of government getting together and getting a better price.
It would definitely be worth looking into.
Yeah, and your statement about the state might be true, but it's unfortunate. Hopefully, somebody at the state realizes that if there are enough communities buying a product, that the state could help communities, but as you point out, there are more salary, more salary problems on their part to have somebody taking care of purchasing for multiple communities. Thank you.
I have a question. So these are, these are units that gather consumption data?
Correct. They actually take the physical reading from the meter that we previously have discussed and transmit that information to the mobiles, to the fixed radio stations.
Right.
As well as to the mobile reeds that are located within some of our vehicles.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. So the Itron, is this, is this a proprietary, are there different companies that have different equipment that do the same thing but are not interoperable?
Correct.
So St. Charles could be using a different device, so we wouldn't be able to go in buying with them, but there are, so that complicates, you have to find the communities that are using the same equipment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the Itron with the iPearl, and it probably communicates with your iPad?
Let's not start that room. Let's not start that room.
All right. All in favor of item J?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item K, resolution authorizing purchase of polydine polymer for wastewater treatment plant at a cost of $1.05 per pound.
So moved.
Alderman Simonian? Need a second?
Second.
Alderman Marks? Any questions? Comments? I read the staff introduction to this item to my wife. It sounds perfectly disgusting.
You get used to it.
What's that?
You get used to it.
Yeah. Okay. No questions? All right, all in favor of item K?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Good. Item L?
Thank you.
Recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award and contract for the 2015 geotechnical services and construction material testing to Rubino Engineering in the amount of $40,415.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marks? Alderman Flanagan? Spring is here, road construction is on the agenda. Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to, in the recommendation, I'd like to add in there, in the amount not to exceed $40,415?
Not to exceed $40,000. Okay?
If anyone doesn't have a problem with that.
I don't know. Is there a problem with that?
There's no problem with that.
I don't know.
Then I don't.
So, do I do the amended motion?
You can say the motion or second or concur. I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
All right, we're fine with that. So everybody realizes then that item L is to pass this in an amount not to exceed $40,415. Do we have any?
Brian, is this just testing the, what are we really doing here?
This is, the majority of that money will be spent on the road program, testing for the asphalt and the concrete.
The right depth and stuff is put down.
Density materials, but they will also do some testing on like the spoil piles taken from our water main breaks. We have to test that material, make sure it's not hazardous waste.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of item L, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item M, draft resolution authorizing bid award and contract for the 2015 parking lot seal coating project, Pavement Systems, in the amount of $4,300.
So moved.
Alderman Flanagan? Alderman Sino? Alderman Simonian?
If this, if you're not opposed, I'd like to add that is well in there, in the amount not to exceed $4,300?
No problems, Brian?
Well, 'cause they're budgeted at different amounts. They have an estimated cost and then a, an amount, and some of these have verbiage in it that says not to exceed, others don't. I don't understand the reasoning why, when we have a bid.
If part of the motion is the amount, you know, as it's.
It's an exact amount.
Right, it's an exact amount, it's stated on the agenda here, and you really don't need that, but it doesn't hurt to add it.
The amount was budgeted for that at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then it came low in, right? Low budget?
Right, and the, you know, for example, the amount in the motion under M, in the amount of $4,300, so that's what.
Was lower than the estimated cost.
Right, but that is part of the motion, so you really don't even need to add in an amount not to exceed, because that's included in the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll leave it as is, 'cause it's $4,100.
I would. I would.
What's that?
I would.
Whatever you feel most comfortable with is fine. I'm not going to sign anything over $4,300 anyway, so.
All right, so we're good with item N. Any other questions? No. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item N, recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award and contract for the 2015 sidewalk and curb maintenance project to Stratoc Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Brown? Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Flanagan? Questions about the curb and sidewalk?
Okay, now I'm confused. This one has a bid amount of $34,662, but we have an amount not to exceed $45,000.
That's correct. We have a budgeted amount of $45,000. You'll notice in the summary that we actually have two programs. We do a big part of it in the springtime. We purposely set some money aside so that we can follow through in the fall and pick up some additional work then.
Okay. Thank you. Now you have cleared up my confusion, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Is, not to exceed is obviously causing me some issues.
All right, has anybody else got any confusion or questions? Alderman Kilberg?
Is there a residence that feel that they have uneven sidewalks and they haven't been addressed for a year or two? How, what do you suggest they do? If, in other words, if they have a swell, or you have, end up with a lot of standing water, where you, where the sidewalk has sunk, what's the best way for a resident to try and have that addressed if they feel that there's something that may need to be done to the sidewalk in front of their property?
Yeah, if residents are noticing problems with the sidewalk out front, the city's website's actually set up to accept those kinds of requests. They should go on the city's website and note the location, and we can get that included in the next available program.
Or at least come out and take a look at it and make an assessment. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor of item N? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Good. Next item, resolution authorizing bid award and contract for the 2015 street improvement project to Geneva Construction Company in the amount of $2,45,601.14.
So moved.
Second.
Marks and Simonian, thank you. Do we have any questions about this street? All right.
One quick. When do you think you'd start on some of these streets? Would that be before June 1st, you think?
Yeah, well, this one could approve till next meeting in May. Give us a week and a half, two weeks to get contracts, insurance lined up.
So it probably won't be before June 1st.
We could potentially be starting June.
Right around then.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mary, I know some of this comes from, you know, the sales tax increase that we had.
a number of years ago, is this, this, any of this money come from the state then also, or is this pretty much just, we know this is there?
We do use MFT funding, primarily that is allocated toward work that our streets crews do, but we do use MFT, a combination of MFT funding and the non-home rule sales tax that was approved by referendum, that's restricted to only infrastructure costs.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor of the 2015 street improvement program, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item P, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of pole attachment agreement with wide open west for fiber installation.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Alderman Simone. Any questions? Alderman Marx.
I'll leave it at that. How many poles are they looking to attach, I couldn't see that in here, because we arrived at $27.99 a pole.
$27.99 is based on the village code-
Okay.
-as well as negotiations between city council and their council, the number of poles to be attached to is still to be determined because they're actively looking at reengineering the route to, for cost savings.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have sort of a different path, wide open west, is this while, is this the same as the cable provider?
Mm-hmm.
No interest in talking to them about providing cable service?
Oh, yeah.
And they just don't want to do it?
Well, it's all about the capital investment, so, but yes, we have encouraged them-
Okay.
-to invest.
Curious. All right, any other questions? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope.
Thank you.
Item Q, recommend draft ordinance amending Title 11 zoning related to removal of taxi stand as a permitted use in the B1, B2, B3, and B4 districts and Title 7, Chapter 3, Section 731 of the Geneva City Code. I have a motion.
So moved.
Alderman Marx.
Second.
Alderman Sino. Do we have any questions about the removal of taxis from this code? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, no opposed. Item R, draft resolution to waive bidding process and authorizing execution of a three year extension of a management agreement with Bound Property Management for administration of the Fisher Farms Special Service Area, SSA number 16, at a cost not to exceed $10,999.92 for 2015 and 2016, also a contract with Mutz Landscaping for Fisher Farms SSA Landscape Services at a cost not to exceed $50,380 for the same two years.
So moved.
Alderman Flanagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Bruno.
You said 50, it's 53.
What did I say?
50.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was in a messpoke, the not to exceed amount for Mutz Landscape is $53,380, not $50,380.
I-
Still, yep, okay, thank you. Do we have any questions, is there anything else I messed up with that one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item S, recommend draft ordinance amending Title 4, Chapter 2, adding craft beer under the A5 limited specialty package liquor license classification.
So moved.
Alderman Brown, Alderman Sino. Do we have any questions?
I like that Alderman Sino's so enthusiastic about this.
It seemed like the entire council was buying this one.
Do we believe-
Alderman Bruno.
Just, so I understand, this is just to allow those A5 liquor license holders to sell as packaged liquor some of what they serve.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ask Mr. Brown, are we sure we understand the definition of craft beer?
Go to your next one.
I don't see it well spelled out in the ordinance, and, you know, one man's craft is another man's business.
Well, why is there this craft beer to push, right? What is the electric commissioner thinking?
Well, by way of background, this request was made specifically to me by one of our liquor license holders, and it was for the express purpose of providing their guests with the opportunity to purchase and take with them the craft beers they sell at their establishment, so it's unlikely that you'll hear a lot of requests for some of the domestic brands.
Did you not mean then that craft beer meant beer brewed on premises?
No, craft beer is beer made in smaller batches on the national breweries such as-
See, well, there are some small brewers like Sam Adams that brew hundreds and hundreds of varieties on a seasonal basis, would that be called a craft beer?
Yes, it would be.
The definition of craft distillers is in the definition section of this, of the code.
Ah, okay, I missed it, sorry.
So it's 35, not greater than 35,000 gallons per calendar year, or as such quantities as may be permitted under the Illinois Liquor Control Act.
Whatever that means. Thank you.
Thank you, I didn't see it, but I believe you. All right, any other questions? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item T, recommend ordinance 2015-09 amending Title 4, Chapter 2, related to outdoor seating liquor license classification, do I have a motion?
I want-
Alderman Sino, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Simone, questions?
Since this came up at Alderman Simone's request, I think they've done a good job, is your impression that they did a good job in defining what they meant?
I think it was Alderman Cummings.
Actually, Alderman Cummings, yeah.
I'm sorry, right, right, yes.
I, uh-
Sorry, Tom.
No, no, I rattled the sword, he stuck it in. No, I, I mean, this is pretty much almost, I mean, verbatim to the Virginia.
Very, very close.
Yeah, so I mean, it, I think they did, they did a great job of, of defining barrier as best you can define barrier, and I'm sure, as I have a head of hair on my head, that there's going to be a request for some sort of barrier that we, is not even in here, but so be it.
It's a good attempt.
But I think they did a good job.
Thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
I was curi-, well, first of all, it's, it's great, I think it gives a lot more latitude to purveyors and those establishments, I was a little curious why specifically fabric inserts were disallowed, am I missing something with fabric inserts as being a bite?
Well, that, that comes from the Alexander, Virginia-
Okay.
-ordinance, so it just, it mirrors that, so they have a problem with it, and because they have a problem, we have a problem.
But they, if you think about the fabric insert could have advertising on it.
Yeah.
Seagate, Cincinnati or something along those lines, so why even open the door for that kind of thing?
Got it.
Why, couldn't they have advertising on other inserts?
You gotta put advertising on a rope fence, I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe it's because-
Maybe somebody hasn't thought about it.
It's the anti-textile.
Yes.
They have a strong lobby.
We'll be seeing them on Wednesday.
All right.
We could allow them as long as they match the umbrellas.
Let's not go there, guys.
All right, we're getting a little off track. Do we have any questions that are exactly pertinent to the new ordinance? I think, the one comment I want to make is it's important that, that everybody on this council own this thing now, because as, as Alderman Simone pointed out, we will get requests for variances and to deviate, we will get complaints saying it's too restrictive and things like that, so this, this is done under our approval, we own it, we don't throw anybody under the bus for it.
I, I thought this was less restrict, I felt it was less restrictive.
You felt what?
I thought it was less restrictive. Good one.
Maybe, but, anything's always confined.
Points taken.
Thank you. All right, let's vote and get it done.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just was curious whether or not the draft was provided to any of the, those people that had concerns with our ordinance in the past, in other words, if they had an opportunity to sit down and have a discussion in regard to some of the changes that we're proposing here, to improve that ordinance and make it more favorable or more, more conducive to those businesses and what they're trying to do with, with their outdoor seating.
My understanding is that they were-
I know that they could go online and, well, go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
My understanding is that they were in on the beginning when we were having the discussion, and staff was given direction to use this as a model, so I believe there were several of them that I, I know Alderman Simone and, and I believe Alderman Cummings both had spoken with, and I know that they were at the meetings, so they were aware that we were using that model, it was distributed at that time, so since that time, we have not followed up with them, but we didn't get any feedback from them that they were opposed to it when we started down that path.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to new business. Do we have any new business for the committee? Nope, all right, upcoming meetings, the next regular committee, the whole meeting is on May 10th, 7:00 PM here at City Hall, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alderman Simone.
Second.
Alderman Flanagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, we'll take a two-minute break and then have a special city council meeting. All right, let's move on into the special meeting of the city councils. Yo, partners on the left. Thank you. I'd like to call a special meeting of the city council to order, please, do we take the roll for this, let's take the roll, please.
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilberg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Markes?
Here.
Tom Simone?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Here.
All right, two items of business tonight, item one, recommend resolution number 2015-42 approving a revised Appendix A to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Geneva and the Geneva Professional Firefighters Association, Local 4287, but I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Alderman Brown, seconded by Alderman Singer. Do we have questions? No questions, roll call, okay, so we'll do a roll call for this one.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Markes?
Aye.
Tom Simone?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Good. She carries item number two, recommend resolution number 2015-43 authorizing execution of purchase power agreements for the year 2015, 2016, 2017, 18, and 19.
So moved.
Alderman Flanagan.
Second.
Alderman Singer. Do we have any?
Thank you, Chairman. I thought, Rich, I thought this was three years.
We asked them to go longer.
Well, I know, I, I mean, I, we were hoping for as many as we could get.
Excuse me, it was for a three-year contract, we are currently in about the last 18 months of our current contract.
Oh, okay, so that's the overlap?
We were able to negotiate a very lucrative revised current contract with the same provider, which will generate an immediate cost savings to the city of Geneva of a little over $300,000 for its energy purchases over the next 18 months.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Nice job.
Gary Price and-
Thank you.
Cal White did a wonderful job with this project. You're welcome.
I'd be more than happy to represent all 22,000 whatever and say thank you.
Good job.
So we did get an extra year here on it, too?
No, no, because it's actually, it over, it's, it's the way the calendar falls with the, with the contract, but the, the important thing to note is, is that the last three years are less than what the residents are paying now, so they're actually going to see a cost savings over the next five years.
Fabulous.
That is great.
Nice job.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, let's take a roll call on purchase power.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Markes?
Aye.
Tom Simone?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Can I have a motion to waive the fees?
So moved.
Simone and Alderman Marx, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote nay.
Why you gotta be like that?
Thank you very much, folks, have a good night.
You know, you're having a party.
Yep.